Welcome to the committee of the whole meeting for June the 20th, 2022. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 5:03 PM. Start with the adoption of the agenda. Agenda adopted as presented or amended. Can I have a mover, please? Moved by Counselor Pol, second or Counselor Garvey. Any additions? Madam Mayor?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to add an in-camera item. Personnel matter. It will be just discussed with counsel. Thank you.
Okay. Anything further? Hearing and seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
That is carried. Thank you. We have a reception of delegates this morning. We have Lois, Lois Wales from Red River North Tourism. I see Rob Sargentson and Marilyn Williams. Did I miss anybody?
Um, no, I don't think so.
Okay, so Lois, the floor is yours.
Okay, so after we last met with you.
So, okay, so moving forward with this conversation, let's make sure we're careful of, you know, disclosing any, any, any other information. Otherwise, we'll move this, we'll move in camera and finish this discussion in camera, then move back out to the regular meeting, if that's what the council wants to do.
We would like to make a couple of comments that I did get official, you know?
I would request we stop the regular meeting right now. I think we may have to get Tim to edit some of this, the meeting, what was discussed, edit the recording on this. He'll have to play it back. We'll have to see, but I think we go in camera right now.
Okay, let's, let's do that and we'll finish this conversation in, in camera.
And so it's just, it's really disheartening that we've worked so hard to convince them since we first presented to a pre-budget meeting in, I think it was 2016. And, and now they made the announcement they were fixing and now everybody wants it.
Okay, let's, let's move in camera here to finish this, this, this discussion, okay? Motion that counsel move in camera at 5:16 PM to discuss matters that are preliminary stages and respecting which discussion in public could prejudice the municipality's ability to carry out its activities or negotiation as well as legal and personal issues. And being further resolved that members of council agree to keep in confidence a matter that is discussed at a meeting that is close to the public under subsection 152-3 and that the committee decides to keep confidential until that matter is discussed at a meeting of the council or committee conducted in public. Can I have a mover, please? Moved by Counselor Pol, seconded by Madam Mayor. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Tim to move out of camera. Motion to move out of camera at 5:32 PM. Can I have a mover, please? Moved by Counselor Pol, seconded by Counselor Brechen. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much. Can we get all of counsel on? There we go. There it's, I can see all now. Okay, let's move on then to management reports, Public Works Manager Report. Rick.
Hello, everybody can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, first I was gonna start with, we, we've got $138,000 from the government to do some roadwork with. So we're thinking of, of doing some hot patches, some on Settler's Trail and some on Boyd, and I would believe I'd like to get a little bit on McLennan Road. And then from there to see if we have anything left to go further with it, but that's kind of where we're thinking of, of working with that money. Know what everybody's thoughts are.
Deputy Mayor Holby.
Hi, Rick. Thanks so, so much. Funny you're starting on that right away. I had a comm customer, a resident contact me on Friday, Thursday and Friday, I believe, actually. They're on McLennan as well, and I, I'm not sure if you're aware of this today. I'm not sure if they were able to reach you. But I guess there's some concerns of a lot of trucks using that road right now for the development, very close to that street. And there's concerns about road damage and, and I'm guessing why you're picking that road then is one of the options is because you've seen it or are you familiar with this situation?
No, I'm not. I haven't seen what they're referring to for road damage, but I have seen some spots on, on there where, where we should do some attention to it now before we lose control of it.
Yeah.
What they're, what they're, what they're referring to, I, I did hear a little bit about it today. And yeah, I mean McLennan Road is down in our paperwork as a non-truck route, but they're also going in and working on them neighboring roads there. And some of the stuff, that's how they need to get in, like, you know, I don't know, people forget that once upon a time their road was getting done and, you know, sometimes you have to go that way to get in there and I can't see them, I mean, they, they will, there's no doubt they'll be doing a little bit of damage, but hopefully we can fix that back up.
Yeah, and, and that's what I said to them too. It may be their only option, but that's, that's great. If, if you're looking at some of those repairs, apparently they had pictures and stuff. So if that's something that we looked at, that would be fantastic. Thank you.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, so that, there was that and then we, we started graveling. We got three days in and then, of course, we had all the rain and bad weather. Now they're a little bit low on material in the quarry, so they've been drilling and they had a blast scheduled for tomorrow, but now our weather's showing us it's gonna rain all day tomorrow. So they've moved that blast to Wednesday. So Wednesday, that means they won't move the crusher back in till Thursday or Friday and, and start crushing. And once they get crushing, hopefully the following week, we can go right back to work and get our graveling all, all finished. And once we get about, we got three days done now. We get another three or four days in a graveling, then we'll start behind coming with the dust control. You know, we gotta at least get a head start with the graveling to make it worthwhile. I don't wanna have to use a little bit of dust control and stop and make them wait. Rather, just keep everything flowing through and, and keep it going, same as we did last year. But that's, that's kind of where we're at there. And then also, in, in the budget every year, I've always budgeted enough to, to trade in one of the pickup trucks and always put $50,000 in the budget for that. So once again, this year I was looking to try and find a one-ton truck. I've been watching the dealers in Selkirk, the three dealers, and I finally have found one at Chrysler. There's a 2018 Dodge, a 3500. And I'd like to, to purchase it and trade in our Ford one-ton, which the Ford is 21 years old and has a V10 that is really poor on fuel, which isn't very good with our fuel prices these days. But anyway, it, there's 50,000 in the budget and after the trade, the total bill with taxes in, it came out to 49.6. So I'm just looking for some support on counsel on that.
Okay, Counselor Hunt.
Okay, can we go back to the roads a minute first? We never finished talking about them. Or, or let's, let's finish off on that truck then. I am, as long as, what was, what was in the budget, Tim, or Rick? Was it 50 or 55,000?
50,000.
Okay, so we're trading in a one-ton 3500?
One ton, yeah, one ton on a one-ton.
Okay, and you're never gonna touch a one-ton crew cab for that kind of money? You, that's for sure, so. Okay, I have no problem that. Can we go back to roads then? You talk about truck roads. That's what people need to be educated on is a truck route, meaning you can't go from A to B, like going from McLennan to River Road. If they're going down there to work, that's fine, but they can't use it as a thoroughfare. That's the definition of a truck route. Going back to Boyd, there's a subdivision still going in there, probably doing, going in there for a few more years. So again, a patch is, is better than redoing the road and having it damaged than waiting till the subdivision is complete. You know, so whether it goes on the list next year for a complete paving or the year after, you know, but this, this will sure get it through. Because there's only one or two bad spots that are really bad that have lifted because of the, again, the poor spring that we had, and that's kind of what this money is for, is to kind of compensate us for any of this long spring and damages and that, so I'm good with that, so.
Okay, Madam Mayor?
Okay, not knowing about road building. These trucks and these subdivisions Lori just mentioned, why is the RM paying for all this damage? Why is the people that are damaging our roads, these trucks that are doing the subdivision and everything, why aren't they being charged some portion of it?
Counselor Hunt, do you have an answer for that?
Well, I don't have an answer for it. There's no damage from the subdivision. Like, you know, there's other traffic going down there, even our graders going down there. There's all kinds of stuff going down there. But there's, that's why we ask for, you know, where roads to be done after a subdivision is completed. So why put extra wear and tear on, on a road if doesn't need to be? The roads still have to go in, the vehicles still have to go in there under legal loads and the road has to be built to a spec to handle those legal loads. So I'm not saying the trucks going in there are damaging the, the roads. You know, does it do it any good? Probably not, but if we can divert some of the traffic or like you say, why go, put a new road in when you still have, what causes the damage is trucks turning on, on the asphalt. That's, it's not the truck going down and it's turning, backing into lanes and that, so. So we can mitigate some of that and, and, you know, postpone it and, and make the road work for two or three more years. And then people have a nice road forever then, so.
Okay, I understand that. So if we're doing the 138,000 for hot patching, why would that not be done like on McLennan, say? Or Boyd, why would that be not be done? Cause aren't they gonna ruin the hot patching?
Rick, maybe you can clarify.
The hot patching is to, to save your road. You're, you're, all you're doing is putting a patch on it, but you don't wanna rebuild that road right now. But you do wanna save the infrastructure of what you have there. So by putting a hot patch on it, you're, you're gonna keep that, that, that part of your road yet. If you don't, you're gonna lose that part and then you're gonna be rebuilding the whole road sooner than you wanna be.
Okay, thanks. I understand now. Thank you.
Okay, quick question for counsel. Support for, for new truck for, for next year. Are you, are we all in support of that? It wasn't, it wasn't a budget?
Yes.
Okay, Rick, so then you have support for that purchase. Please continue, Rick.
Okay, that's, that's kind of where, where I'm leaving off is I had the truck and the patching and I wanted to let you know where we were at the graveling and the dust control. Other than that, we, we're cutting grass. We have all the mowers out now. There's, there's a, a lot of, not a lot, but there is some complaints coming in. People wanting grass cut, but more so on empty lots and whatnot, not, not on the ditches. It's people complaining about their neighbors or bought empty lots or, or whatnot. But that's more stuff that the weed board would deal with, I would think, be cutting that we won't be.
You know, that's not a responsibility of the municipality. That's a responsibility of the, of the landowner. And the weed board will cut it for a price, but if there's noxious weeds on there, they will cut it and more spray it and will be charged to the taxes. Deputy Mayor Holby.
Yeah, hi, Rick. Sorry, one other question. Can you tell me if, cause I, I don't think it's been done yet and, and maybe this is on the plan and I noticed they're still doing it in Selkirk this weekend, but the street cleaning.
We've done all our streets. We've been down most of them. The couple that we haven't done are ones that we're scared to touch right now because they're in bad shape. We don't wanna tear them up any worse than what they are. But unless we've missed something somewhere, the boys were up and down all the streets right from Selkirk to the south end and back again, and I'm hoping they, they got them all.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, counsel, any further questions for, for Rick? Hearing and seeing none. Rick, thank you very much for your presentation and we look forward to your continued efforts.
Okay, everybody have a good evening. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, Economic Development Officer Reports. Felicia, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I just need to get set up here and try and share my screen. Tim, is it?
Yeah, your, your screen is there. Please proceed.
My screen is there? Okay, great. One second. Sorry, one second. Okay, so I, I am, this is the report. It's, it's kind of an outline of things that we've been working on over the last several months already. Lot of it you're somewhat familiar with, I'm sure. Just a lot of it will be a bit of an update on what's been going on. So first of all, we're following the same format as before, kind of a review of, and current items and future items. So the review, the first thing I wanted to do was, I, I just call it taking the, the RM temperature and it's to do with statistics and data and compiling it, and I think it gives a good kind of overview of kind of where the community is at and the health of the community. So we're gonna start with the 2021 demographics. We know that StatCAN came out in February and so we're just gonna do some comparison of some previous years. So we know that the population has reduced by 190 people since the last StatCAN in 2016. The chart on the right is just kind of an overview from 2006, 2011, 2016 and 2021. So we, we've started a bit of a decline from where we have been in the past three census. I am gonna be going over quite a few numbers. I don't wanna, I, I hope you can catch them. If I, if I'm missing anything, just, just please step in and ask a question. So we also, from this stat, also realize that our median age is also getting older. So this year it was, in the last census, 1.3 years, the population is aging. The chart on the right is kind of a, a snippet of the different population age groups and what I've done is put them into 10-year increments so we can get a better idea of what each age group is doing and it's through three census, census, sorry. And so we can see that the beginning age groups, the first zero to nine is a little bit of an increase this year, but from 2011 is still a decrease. The next, uh, sense, or next two age groups from say 10 to 29 has been declining. 30 to 39 had a bit of an increase. 40 is on, to 49 is on a steady decrease. 50 to 59 is on a decrease as well. And then we can see from 60 plus, we're on a steady increase in age. So I don't think that's much of a secret to anybody, but we can kind of pinpoint it a little bit better. So the chart on the left is the same age increments, but this is just from the last census. And so what I've done is now break it down to, to show why it's important and what this really looks like. So the first two age group from zero to 29, or pardon me, 19 is the children, the children in school. So in the one census in five years, there's been a reduction of 120 children. The next group from 20 to 60 is our labor force. And so our labor force has had a decline of 560 in the last five years. And then the last group is our senior group, 60 plus. And we've had an increase of 105 in that category. Well, the next thing I wanted to talk about was, so how does this compare to the households? What do the household makeup look like? So one-person household makes up about 17%. A two-person household, 41%, three-person, 18%. Four-person, 16, and five and more is 8%. So what we can see is that any family with two or more children are making up about 24% of the population, which is, is fairly low. And then so I wanted to quick comparison about the other population compared to the other municipalities. So St. Andrews, we know we had a negative 190. St. Clement's grew by 710. West St. Paul grew by 13, over 1,300 and Selkirk grew 226 from the last census. So another indicator of the community health is construction permits and values. So I just wanted to do a quick review of this. There's nothing really to, you know, shocking, but I think it's, it's always good information. So the total number of permits, and so this isn't census, this is year by year. So we've declined about four permits in 2021, but it's still very consistent with what's been happening. Although the permits have been, had a bit of a decline, the actual value of the permits went up quite a bit and that was in 2021. We had $24 million in permits. So to break that down, there's a lot of numbers here, but I think most specifically what I would like to point out is.
Felicia, can I drop you there? Kristin has her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. On the two screens forward, backstory, where you had the breakdown of the families. I, I just wanted to clarify because you said that families made up only 24%, but in fact, I think it's like 38% or something. I was trying to read the numbers quickly. Because they're actually, for two or more would be 18, 16 and 8%, would it not?
Well, I was, it depends how you break it down, right? So I'm thinking a, a traditional family union, unit with two or more children, right? It certainly could be a single parent with, with two children would be the three as well. So there's different dynamics that can certainly go into that.
I see what you're saying. Yeah. So basically, it's probably when you take the, the children aspect, it's probably a fairly, it's one's 42, one's 41. It's probably pretty evenly cut down the line. Unfortunately, not knowing if it's a one or two-parent household, but.
Yeah, so it would be the, the 24 plus 18, you know, would be, I guess, probably more so of our family type units.
Right, okay, cool. Awesome. Thank you very much.
Okay, so what I wanted to point out with this is, as you can see, the vast majority of our construction permits and values is either for single-family dwellings themselves or residential properties being renos, additions or gradus. That may, by far makes up the vast bulk of all of the permit and permit values in the municipality. So commercial permits, in 2021, we had six commercial permits and that, that value of that permit was 3.8 million, which was up from the previous years, but still not a huge investment in commercial. So going back to residential construction permits, we were up this year to 38 new single-family dwellings and it's been pretty consistent over, over the previous years. This was a bit of a bump. The value of that, of those 38 units was about $16 million in assessment value. And what I found interesting, I wanted to add this on, is the, the bottom chart in white. The average value of those single-family dwellings was $425,000 per, per, for a single-family dwelling, which was up from 2020 from 339. So just one, I thought it was interesting that the, the, certainly the value of the homes has increased substantially. I also wanted to do a quick comparison about the other municipalities and what their permits look like. So St. Andrews had 38, St. Clement's had 71, West St. Paul had 223 and Selkirk had 31. But I also wanted to note for comparison purposes, those were strictly single-family dwellings, whereas West St. Paul and certainly Selkirk had other multifamily units as well. And this I wanted to add in too, just so we get a better understanding of the value of the, of the market. So this isn't the building cost like the other ones. This is actually what houses are selling for in St. Andrews. So the far left bar is for the entire metro region. The average purchase home price is just under $424,000. And that's an increase of over 20% since last year. St. Andrews, the average home price, and this is for 2022 up to the end of May, has been six, over $620,000 and that's an increase of over 36% since last year. And then we show St. Clement's, West St. Paul, East St. Paul. You know, they're, West St. Paul and East St. Paul going up to in the 700,000s and City of Selkirk at 319,000 and their increase since last year was over 14%. So I thought those were, were interesting numbers. So moving away from that, some of the other things that we had accomplished in the last little while was development bylaws. We did the wastewater utility connection fees bylaw, the capital development levy bylaw, and amendment to the developer, developer deposit bylaw. Development policies included the wastewater connection policy for new development, municipal naming policy and the land acquisition and disposal policy. One of the other things that I wanted to highlight and we're all aware, but just the broadband. I think it's, it was an important thing that happened. It was a $9.5 million infrastructure investment, services to 1,300 residents and they will be finishing that up this, this year. The other things I wanted to talk about was the employment lands, so the St. Andrews Industrial Business Park and the St. Andrews Airport. The business park, one, phases one, two, three of 63 lots are completed and sold out and they are planning their next phases. In, at the airport, they had their expansion of 18 lots released. I believe there's two new hangars now and Valley Fiber is actually working with them to now look at bringing in internet into, or broadband into the airport area there, which is, I think will be really helpful for the businesses there. So some of the current things that we're working on. I, I always, I know this isn't, this is kind of boring, but the planning and development files, it's really kind of the meat, meat and potatoes of what's going on. So, so far in 2022, we've had three conditional, conditional uses, 14 variances, seven new subdivision applications and nine existing ongoing subdivision applications at various stages. The total planning applications for 2021 were 49 applications. On, the other thing we're working on, of course, is the Scoutlift Miller Murray news, new residential zones, which you're all aware of as well, and, and we were doing this so that we could maximize the road infrastructure, create density to expand our tax base, create revenues that support recreation and programming, minimize wasteful use of land and sprawl, support the municipal water, sewer system, possibly provide the ability for water services, enhance affordability and housing form options, which I think given the, the, the average market price and, you know, the way our population is moving, that I, I think those are really important. And getting Scoutlift Miller Murray is really going to provide, hopefully, zones that, that still kind of seamlessly transition from the existing character so that people don't, you know, all of a sudden have an apartment right next to them, right? And that's kind of the intent of, of having this, this really, having them involved to do this. The other thing that we're working on is the water feasibility study and, and there was support recently to move forward with that, so we will be issuing an RFP in July. And so this is to support the airport industry and expansion, support next phases of the St. Andrews Industrial Business Park. You know, if we can provide sewer, or pardon me, water services there, we all of a sudden, and, you know, expand possibly the sewer there as well. We're really opening up the. We're really opening up the door to different type of industries, ones that maybe are a little bit more uh water intensive for use. Um, so that, you know, right now we have a lot of um. Uh, trucking operations, transport operations where they use a lot of land, but they don't necessarily. Uh, put up uh large buildings or, or expensive buildings. Um, and so we're not getting the commercial tax base that, that potentially could be there. If we had sewer and water services. Um, and also the water service also support fire protection in the employment lands where the fire department is saying it's difficult to uh. Um, you know, they, they consider that area um challenging for fire supri- or protection. Uh, uh, of course, support residential development and density um and support sustainable development. And so some of the things that we're working on is the development bylaws, the land acquisition reserve, which comes after we, now that the policy's been passed. The zoning bylaw amendment for the new zones potentially. Development policies, the residential development design standards and the economic development uh. Report uh that will go along with the situational analysis and I had sent you a copy last week. I believe of kind of draft report. So the future items and things that we're working on. Uh, so is again, the situational analysis, report that I was, that I had sent you and. And it's really just provides a scan of the current status of projects. And initiatives as well as reviews relevant and related documents and studies. And this was part of it, that's, that's coming together with Ron's report and recreation part, uh, report for. Um, uh, as an information document for the newer, the new council um in the fall. Um, the residential design standards, I think now that we have the potential to, um, you know, we have developers coming forward. I think making these design standards, so we understand what we want our community to look like. And they're going to be consistent for all developers. And that developers know what to expect from the, from the get-go. Um, so I think we're going to um, uh, employ, I would like to create these. Um, and have them embedded into the development agreements. And so there's no, you know, everybody's on the same page and so we'd be looking at paved roads, curb and gutter drainage. Uh, when it's conducive, active transportation and connect connectivity to existing services. In boulevard trees, you know, what do we expect for green spaces and playgrounds? And uh, like I said, I put these into the development agreement. Uh, we're also been working on, and this has been longstanding, but I would like to take it one step forward. And I, and I know there was the travel Manitoba for the rebranding for Lockport area. And unfortunately I couldn't make it, so I'm, I'm really anxious to get some feedback from whoever uh did attend, how that went. But basically, we've been talking about this, I've, I have applied for a couple grants, but that have not been um, uh, accepted unfortunately. And we're looking to redevelop the street scape along Highway forty-four from the, from the bridge. To Highway nine to include a path, make it inviting active transportation, some um. Uh, landscaping features and uh so to get first and foremost a design done, a concept design and then. From there move to engineering and, and installation, but the, that'll have to be in concert with Manitoba infrastructure, because it will be going in the right of way. Um, and so that's something I'd like to, to work on. Uh, the RM of Saint Clement's, you know, they're in a little bit different situation there because that area is developed. But they, they are certainly uh committed to doing other things that. Um, they've committed two hundred thousand to the local trail system rate around Lockport. Um, and five hundred to a biz uh, a biz zone incentive program. And I think, you know, once we may move a little bit forward, getting um that la- um. Streetscaping done and, and potentially getting more businesses in that we can sign kind of. Um, have some similar commitments to some of the businesses and, and just boosting up that area. Uh, and land inventory and management, and I've talked about this probably to nauseam, but. Um, we are now, we've, we've created the land acquisition and disposal policy. We've working on the land acquisition reserve. So now we are putting it uh into our land asset ma- management database. So then we can manage our land a lot better. And then we can um look at how we're going to invest and divest. Uh, with uh an education, educated decisions. Um, based around the land, is it developable, is it undevelopable, is it park or public space, is it. Are used for arm, M, infrastructure buildings, are these just remnant parcels with no use? Um, so we'd have to determine the land values and. Uh, I, uh, add or remove them from the tangible capital assets. And uh identify land potentially for disposal, so it's just, it's good asset management really. Um, so that's something that needs to be steadily worked on as well.
Thank you, Lisa, if you could uh change the screen back to the regular council. Council, you have any questions for Lisa? Uh, Madam Mayor.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Lisa, that is an excellent presentation. On page seven of your report, the Saint Andrews zoning bylaw four oh six six. Um, the current zoning bylaw is twenty years old. R P D has undertaken a revamping of all district zoning bylaws. Do you have any idea, because I think that other plan we had that went to the province a couple of years ago, that was years overdue. Is that expected to be the same as this one and that's why we've got Scott lift Murray Miller working on?
Uh, well, it's two, two things, um, the development plan requires. The, through the minister that it's reviewed every five years and you're, and you're right, it was long overdue. The zoning bylaw doesn't have that requirement, but it is certainly outdated to the point that it's being more of a hindrance than a help in a lot of ways. Uh, so the uh Red River Planning District was going to do a total revamp of all of the district. Zoning bylaws in twenty twenty-one and got busy with other things that's pushed back. I don't know, they will not give a new timeline for when they're expecting those to be done. But the new zones, regardless if we implement, we have to. Look at creating them and what they're going to look like and, and, and approve them, right? This is how we see our community moving forward. So they're going to be creating those um, uh, new zones or, you know, for us, for the municipality to consider. Um, it, even Red River Planning, when they were doing that update. Would not necessarily, what they would do is they would create the same zones for all of the municipalities. You know, they wouldn't take the initiative to do the research. Um, try and maintain the character that, that Scott lift and Miller Murray is going to do. Um, so I think it's important that they're doing it. Um, and we don't know when Red River Planning will actually get to complete that project. So I think it's, it's prudent of the um municipality to move forward with that independently.
Thank you, because that was also an issue at W M R. That um, they wanted to have this, everybody the same. And that can't be, because we have to be autonomous, we have our own characteristics and everything else. Yes, so thank you.
Any further uh questions or comments from council? Uh, Deputy Mayor, I'll be.
Yeah, I just want to thank you, Lisa, that was really good, it was very informative, uh. Couple of things were a little eye-opening and um interesting at the same time. And I just appreciate your time and efforts on, on completing that for us and presenting.
Thank you.
Uh, Council Prechen, I can't see you, or, did you have a question or comment?
No, it was fantastic, Lisa, all your reports and information that you bring to us always is top-notch, so. I appreciate it, I just hope, uh, I wish we had more time, I wish we had another uh five or ten years to, uh, you know. I wish you would have been here when we started and would have been here years ago, because. The R M has, has missed and needed a person like you many, many years ago and you could see the. The, you know, initiative that's happening in uh West Saint Paul and Saint Clement's, even in Selkirk. And uh, this R M has really kind of shit the bed, so I appreciate you coming and uh really working hard because you're. If we can get another five or ten good years out of you, Lisa, this R M's gonna move forward uh really rapidly and well, so thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Councilor Hunt.
Yeah, thank you, Lisa, so in saying that and carrying on what Matthew said. You know, we have to do some rezoning of some of these lands, like um, these lands that have four acre lots. You know, I think uh Donald Road and some of them ones that have four acre lots that. Lockport Road comes to mind just off of McPhillips Highway, you know, um, there's lots of infill can go into those lots. And then one or two people speak up and said, no, we don't want smaller lots, but we have to be the, the um, um. Forerunner in, in changing some of these zoning, so we get growth in those, in those, in those areas. You know, it was okay years ago, we had small farmers making three acres of hay, you know, people would buy four acre lots. Because that's all there was available back in those days, um, you know, but that's way too big of land for, to put a house and a garage on in a resident, it's a, in a residential area. And we still don't allow those people to get together and infill between those lots, because they built on the middle of the, of the lots, you know, so. We have to be more proactive and the only we're gonna do is take the lead, you know, and change some of these zoning in, in, in these areas.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, expanding on Councilor Hunt's comment, Lisa. But no matter what the rezoning, everything, residents will still have, there would still be public hearings, there would, everything would still be involved, correct?
Absolutely, yep.
Okay.
Okay, any further comments, questions? Oh, Madam Mayor.
Actually, sorry, on page eleven, um, about this, you know, the eighteen hundred connections. Or uh, D D West says are not likely in the next ten years. Um, I'm still confused on this, because what happens? If, like, all the new development is coming forward in that. What happens to the residents that have paid for the main force main? Then they want to hook up, because we've got the ten years, well, nine now. If there's no hookup because of the city of Winnipeg putting that limit on us. What, what happens to those residents if they can't, um, there's no capacity to hook up to?
Well, there's a, there's a couple.
Well, let's, let's Lisa first and then DJ can clear it up and then Councilor Hunt.
Yeah, I'll just think of, just a couple of quick comments, I'm sure DJ can explain it a, a lot better, but. Um, the way the policy reads is that we're always monitoring the hookups, right? So we have a lot of capacity right now. And every time there's new developments coming forward, we're monitoring where we are with hookups to make sure that we have capacity. Because there'll never be a day when, when five hundred them decide that they want to, you know, hook up next month, right? So we're continually have the policy in place of how we're going to monitor that. And secondly is that the current agreement with, with Winnipeg um is, is for three years. So there is the opportunity as we move forward to review that as well. Which, um, you know, we, we could be getting a larger capacity or could be negotiated or whatever.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, first I'll say, I would be thrilled from wherever I'm at if uh, if that does become a problem eight years from now, because that would really be a, a great problem to have. And a great one to uh, to fix, to have that kind of uh growth and support for that project would uh certainly be heartwarming and uh. And I would greatly thank all the people that hooked in over those years. Um, but as Lisa just said, we did arrange this agreement, so it could be renegotiated, it has to be renegotiated. After three years, um, at that point in time, we'll know how many homes are hooking in, what pace they're hooking in. But most importantly, we're gonna know how many sus- how much suspended solids is in the water that we're sending to the city. Because the city restricted us based on solids and we were always sending our solids to the city. You know, so the, this hasn't increased the solids at all, so we can prove that now that we're actually pumping water. So when we do go back to renegotiate with them, I would uh expect that the eighteen hundred and ten year limit would disappear at that point in time. And on top of that, of course, we saw the city of Winnipeg uh has their new seventeen million dollar solution to uh remove uh phosphates from. From the plant and they're gonna start working on that pretty quick and I think you're gonna see a lot of the worries and threats just fade away long before the ten years are over.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Hunt.
Uh, it's exactly what I was gonna say, while we had that problem break, you know, we always ponder on what if, what if, you know, we always worry about that. Let's move forward and cross that bridge when we get to it, let's be positive.
Okay, any further questions or comments for uh, for Lisa? Hearing and seeing none, thank you very much for your presentation, presentation, Lisa, that was great and always uh, always positive and looking forward. Thank you very much, have a great rest of your evening.
Good night, everyone.
Okay, uh, Chief Financial Officer report, Tim.
All right, um, so.
Speaking to your microphone, can't hear you.
Can't hear you. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah. I prepared.
Oh, you're, you're cutting out again.
How about now?
That's better.
Okay, okay. Okay, so I prepared.
No, we keep on losing you, every time you turn your head, we're losing you.
Okay, how about now?
Yes, but until you turn your head.
No.
Just keep on.
Yeah.
No.
Wow. Okay, that's interesting. Um, all right. I'll turn that like this, how's that?
Now, let's try that.
Yep. Um, so these are the April statements, um, so it's the first quarter plus a month. Um, so just a couple of things to keep in mind as, as you review the statements and, and look at the statement. Um, some of the high points are that um, these statements uh don't have any tax revenue in them, because the tax. Hasn't arrived yet.
Well, Tim, we're having the same problem, as soon as you turn your head, we, we are, we're losing you.
Okay.
And do we want to see the statements? Um, uh, do, we're gonna project them, Tim, or no?
I wasn't going to, because I had sent them out.
Okay, no need to then, if everyone's got them.
Okay, uh, they were attached to the uh, to the agenda. Yeah, so, um, so just to keep in mind that there is no tax revenue uh in these statements, because it is April. And, and we'll recognize the revenue when uh, when uh M M O confirms uh, uh, the, the tax revenue for us. So that's something to keep in mind, uh, also along with that. Uh, these statements are uh based on the interim operating audit for budgets, sorry, interim operating budget. Uh, the um, our regular budget was uh, was um approved uh on May the fifteenth. Um, so these statements don't have any reserve spending in them as well. Um, so the reserve spending starts after uh, after May fifteenth and, and uh, and then of course. DJ had that report on.
Oh, Tim, Tim, it's uh, we're, we're losing you real badly here.
How about that?
Yeah, that's okay.
It almost seems like the further you get to, I guess, when I'm looking at the picture on the left of your screen. The better the sound gets, the further to the right you go, the worse it gets.
Okay. Let me just try something here. I've got part of the cable to these uh headphones up, uh, bound up, to keep it from being all over the place, maybe that's the problem. How's that?
No.
Don't lie, eh?
No. If you look straight into the screen and speak into, into your screen, then we can hear you, but as soon as you turn your head to the left, we can't hear.
So I'm trying a different uh port on my computer here to see if that helps, can you guys hear me now?
Yeah, when you're looking at the camera, uh, it works.
Okay, so I've completely changed ports and location, so hopefully that'll solve it. It uh, it's cutting out now?
Well, let's try it, it's hard to tell.
Okay. Okay, well, let's uh, let's see, I can, I can change computers as well if I need to, um, that's an uh, an option as well, so. Um, for now, continue along.
Well, we, we're, Tim, it's not working.
Well. Um, I'm just gonna move my uh, my note over to this computer, then hang on for one second. I can do this. This uh, this device is a little bit older, so. Uh, I've got a different uh headset to. Uh, I've got a different uh, headset that you guys can see here to, to um, solve the problem of the old computer.
We'll have to ask our viewers to please stand by while we're trying to fix some technical difficulties.
Alright, let's see if I can.
I'll just jump in here during this pause, you know, so when, when we get down to the public works things, you know, we can see that so much overtime and so much fuel costs that have gone uh, um, substantially past historic levels. Um, and we anticipated a fair bit of that in the budget process, you know, we did set the budget mostly in April, so we did make those adjustments. Unfortunately, um, April and May was another very high overtime month, uh, you know, and high overtime also means high fuel time, you know, so, so we're definitely spending lots and lots of money this year and that's gonna happen some years, other years, we've saved a lot with uh, last spring, we, we didn't spend much money at all, we didn't even spend all our money cleaning the ditches because we had a drought and uh, all the snow melted before we could get to them, you know, so it, it swings, of course, uh, and um, we put that balance in the general reserve fund, last year we had quite, quite a large surplus from various numbers and you know, if we are looking towards a deficit this year, which is possible, that's certainly one spot I would look to recover the deficit from would just be to take it from the general reserve fund, but uh, I think Tim looks like he's ready now, that was just me filling in a blank there.
Okay, thanks DJ, Tim, we're here, go.
I, I am, yeah, so I'll just uh, I'll just continue on, uh, so, um, as DJ mentioned, uh, um, one of the, well, actually, I'll, I'll come to that in just a minute. So along with uh, no reserve spending, I also wanted to note that uh, we did receive fifty thousand from the North Red River Water Maintenance, uh, Tampa Vex, Tampa Vex. Uh, and that's in our um, our, our other revenue section. So you'll see that note there on the side of the uh, of the statement that I prepared. Uh, and also I wanted to note as well that uh, dedication income is up as well this year. Uh, and that's because of the uh, the business part that uh, that Lisa was talking about earlier, so we've got quite a bit more revenue than uh, than we've had in other years, uh, because of that. So I'll just get the other document up on the screen here. And then I'll just continue on. So I can project this statement if you folks would like me to.
Is it, it's part of your package, isn't it?
It's, it's the statement I sent in the package, that's correct.
Okay, so we can, we can see it in our, in our package then.
Yeah, okay. Alright, well, I'll, I'll put it up anyway, so everybody can see this?
Yes, we can.
Alright, so uh, as I mentioned, uh, I'll just start at the top of the statement and just work my way through, so along the top is the revenues. Um, so we have budgeted this year, uh, nine million, one hundred thirty-nine thousand uh, for tax revenue, uh, and that hasn't arrived yet. In our other, other revenue, uh, we have four hundred and fifty-one thousand so far this year of our intended budget of uh, one point nine million. Um, so this is where the uh, the fifty thousand is that I just mentioned. Uh, along with that, um, this money is not in this statement, but the hundred and thirty-eight thousand that uh, DJ mentioned just recently and Rick was talking about earlier tonight. Uh, it did arrive, it came in on June the fifteenth, so it'll be in the next set of statements that uh, that I prepare for, for you folks. Um, also, uh, just to share with you as well, uh, this hasn't arrived either, but it'll be in this section when it does arrive. Um, Colleen is working on the DFA claim and we're hoping that uh, we'll have about two hundred seventy-five thousand in new revenue to go against some of the costs we've incurred so far this year. Um, for uh, for the uh, the drain opening and stuff like that, the, the disaster relief. So, um, going along uh, to the conditional grants, uh, in this section, uh, we have uh, four point three million dollars budgeted. Um, a lot of that budget or most of that budget is money coming in from the reserve account. Uh, and as I mentioned earlier, we haven't had any reserve spending, so I haven't moved any uh, any money um, against uh, this budget line yet because uh, um, we don't have any uh, any reserve spending. So we do have uh, uh, other items that'll be in this section as well, will be the grant for the trails, the Dutch Elm uh, and the reserve spending. Um, all items that will come uh, throughout the year. Uh, moving into the expenses, um, and starting with uh, the section on uh, legislative, uh, which is, which is us, uh, administration. Um, it's really on track uh, for, for all budget items, uh, including um, uh, all the admin spending and the salaries and types of uh, expenditures are all on track. Uh, the other general government uh, spending as well is all on track as well, there's uh, really no uh, nothing uh, out of, out of budget at this time. Uh, and then the other uh, government uh, um, spending as well is, is below budget right now. And uh, main reason for that is we have um, the project uh, from reserve, the asset management project for a hundred and fifteen. Uh, and once that project starts, those costs will come into, into the section as well. So moving along uh, for the fire halls, um, fire halls are, um, right now they are below budget. Uh, and that's because uh, a big contributor to the, a big contributor to the expenses will be the wages. Uh, and we're just receiving those wages now and they'll be processed in June. So we'll see uh, in the next statement that I prepare, we'll see a fairly large change here because we'll have the first six month wage, uh, included in, in this sec. Uh, continuing on to other protective services. Um, this section is, is below budget right now and uh, part of the reason for that is the um, uh, payment of the bill to the city of Brandon for the nine-one-one. Uh, that's about fifty-four thousand and that will come uh, uh, probably later this month or early next one. Um, as Rick talked about and as DJ just mentioned, when we move into the transportation personnel, uh, we are uh, quite a bit higher in overtime this year as compared to other years. Uh, and I've included uh, a small section here of comparison. Um, so for the full-time uh, overtime, um, uh, in this year, it's a hundred and forty-one thousand and that compares to twenty-twenty-one, which was uh, just under eight thousand and in twenty-twenty, uh, which was twenty-nine thousand, so quite a bit of difference this year, uh, as compared to the last couple of years. Uh, and then again with the seasonal uh, staff, the overtime for them, uh, this year it's thirty-eight thousand and change. Uh, and last year it was uh, one thousand four hundred roughly and the year before it was five hundred and twenty-seven dollars. So quite a, quite a large. Uh, moving along to the equipment fuel, um, it is quite a bit higher this year again. Uh, the diesel is at a hundred and thirty-five this year as compared to thirty-six last year and forty-one the year before. And then the same with gas, gas is twenty-seven thousand this year as compared to ten thousand last year and eleven thousand the year before. So, um, and, and again with, with the um, uh, the application that Colleen's working on, some of these costs will be recoverable, so we won't really see it here that the, that uh, these expenses are gonna drop later, um, meaning that we're not gonna increase the expenses against the uh, the grant money, what will happen is we'll record new revenue for, for the grant when it comes in and, and our overall surplus and deficit will drop. Uh, because of that, uh, that grant money coming in. So, uh, continuing along, uh, equipment repairs, maintenance, uh, are on budget. We have two hundred and fifty-five thousand in this section and we've used fifty-one for each year.
Tim, we're having trouble hearing you again.
Okay. Um, how's that, is that better?
Yeah, it's better, yes, thank you.
Um, so, um, moving along, uh, the insurance, um, there's not a lot of cost recorded here uh, in April and that's because the property insurance bill is paid in May and the vehicle insurance uh, renewals are in June, July, so we'll see this category uh, increase as well, a little later in the year. Uh, other workshop and yard is on budget, um, uh, for this year, uh, so no surprises there. Uh, for the road maintenance, uh, we do have a fairly large budget here. Um, again, there's projects that are coming out of the reserve spending that haven't started uh, as of uh, uh, April. Uh, with the one exception of the uh, and I hope I pronounce this company's name correctly, Eddie. So they did have a couple of uh, progress draws against the project that they have going on for us right now. And that's the uh, and that's Donald Road uh, slope uh, uh, correction, I don't know if that's the right term, but the Donald Road uh, project is, is what they're working on, so we do have a couple of uh, payments that have been made to them uh, by this point and, and they're recorded there. Uh, moving along to ditches and drainage, um, uh, this section, um, surprisingly is not showing a lot of costs uh, in it at this point, um, this budget is, is really intended for the purchase of uh, new culverts uh, and for the drain opening, so, um, this, this section really didn't have uh, much cost in it right now. Uh, assuming that most of the labor costs that are, um, uh, are, are up uh, with the overtime. Uh, and I see I've got two, two raised hands there, John, um.
Yeah, please answer the questions, uh, I, I can't see the raised hands.
Okay, uh, let me just enlarge this. Um, so. Who, who has the questions, I can't see.
I, I had my hand up. Road maintenance, what's the breakdown like between uh, gravel um, or road, road gravel, uh, dust control and um, resurfacing, and did we put anything in there for upgrades?
Uh, yeah, I'm gonna turn my head, so hopefully.
You can just email, email me those also, Tim, that's fine.
Okay, well, I, I've got them here, so I'll try and answer it, uh, answer it very quickly. So for road maintenance, it was six hundred and fifty thousand. Um, for uh, gravel, it was also six hundred and fifty thousand and for dust control, it was four hundred thousand. And then one point six million for, for contracts, so those are the big items, uh, did that all come through, okay, Lori?
Yeah, so what's the six fifty, the first six fifty for road maintenance, like six fifty gravel, four hundred dust control, one point six um, road repairs, what's the six fifty for, I don't recall that one? Road maintenance.
It's for the road maintenance, classified as, so that's probably the Donald Road slope, that'll, that, that'll be the Donald Road slope, uh.
Okay, okay, good, thanks, Tim.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Did anybody else have a question for Tim?
Yes, I have my hand up.
Yeah, go ahead, please.
Um, just on that last one, Tim, that Counselor Hunt asked about one point six road repairs, maintenance for Donald Road slope. That contract came in under a, a million dollars.
Six fifty.
Okay. Six fifty, so you've got six fifty for paving, six fifty for gravel, four hundred thousand for dust control, one point six mil for road repairs or road maintenance. So where does Donald Road fit into this?
That's the six fifty. That's the first six fifty.
So, okay, so that's just for that, it's six fifty, six hundred fifty thousand for gravel. So how much is for paving for the other roads, or is that included in the one point six million?
That's included in the one point six, so that's the ongoing uh, repair work that, that Rick does each year.
Okay, thank you, so on page one, uh, total other revenue, um, four hundred and fifty-one thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars. Where is the just over five hundred thousand from the federal grant announcement, what, last Friday or the Friday before, where is that noted?
Sorry, um, refresh my memory on the five hundred thousand that was just. Cause we.
Let me just jump in on this one, that, that, that would be a capital purchase, uh, capital investment, not a not an operating, this is an operating statement, so the grant we get from uh, from the feds that would go straight to a to the trails, right, so I, I, I know we had trails in the budget towards the end there under capital, uh, I'm just looking at it here, uh, trail development, you know, we anticipated two hundred thousand. Uh, now that we uh, got that grant, it'll be seven hundred thousand, so we'll get a grant in and it'll be paid out, but uh, you know, we haven't, uh, we don't get the revenue until we spend it either, right, so.
Okay, so DJ, thank you, you're looking at page one, conditional grants?
Um, well, when we receive it, I guess we'll have a discussion where to put it, it could go under conditional grants under there and then it could go under contribution to capital and expenses, but they'll be offsetting, um.
Okay, no, what I'm referring to, what you just said, when we get the money, but right now it says conditional grants, actual ninety-nine thousand, four hundred and fifty-two. So if we're getting five hundred, that doesn't equal seven hundred thousand, that's only six. Is that where that money, that five hundred thousand federal trail grant money is going?
Oh, well, you're looking at page one and you're looking at that, what number, six hundred and eighty-seven thousand, or what are you, what number you're looking at?
Uh, ninety-nine thousand, four hundred and fifty-two.
Oh, the actuals, yeah, um. Yeah, I'm not sure, right, I don't, you know, Tim can talk to the actuals, but we didn't get the five hundred thousand yet, so it wouldn't be an actual. Or, and then we didn't have it when we did the budget, so it wouldn't be in the budget either, um, it, it, it wouldn't show up on this form yet.
Oh, okay, so thank you, yeah, I know, I know, a lot is ready June thirteenth. Um, uh, that's not on here, it was June, July, will we be getting this exact sheet, um, by the council meeting in July with all the updated figures?
If that's a question for me, yes, that's my intention, yes.
Oh, great, okay, thank you.
Okay, please continue on, Tim.
Okay, great, I'll just pan down to uh, where we left off. Which was road maintenance, so, or pardon me, it was uh, ditches and drainage. Uh, so continuing on down, uh, other transportation, uh, this section is a little bit below budget at this time, um, and uh, and uh, that may change as the year progresses, uh, but right now it's, there's nothing, nothing big to report there. Um, the landfills, um, they're all on budget, uh, they've all got contracts and uh, and all the regular expenses that go along with the landfills are, are all on budget right now. Um, other uh, environmental health, uh, again, it's on budget and this also includes the uh, Lagoon Master Plan, uh, which had not started as of April, so, so that's uh, that's in this section as well. Uh, public health and welfare, um, this payment usually happens in November, so we won't see this recorded until until November, so this budget will remain open until then. Uh, environmental development services, uh, this is uh, RR PD's uh, municipal contribution, uh, the invoice uh, that comes in, uh, we received it on June the thirteenth, so it'll be recorded in the next set of statements and The invoice that comes in, we received it on June the thirteenth, so it'll be recorded in the next set of statements and. And then this budget will almost be fully utilized at that point. Economic development, again, it's on budget, and this section has the reserve project for drinking water. The drinking water study, so the costs will be there in in future reportings. Our wrecking culture is just on budget for the personnel. Another rec, it's on budget as well, and some of the large grants that we do. Will start now going forward, so you'll see them in future future reports from from me, but as of May, they hadn't really started. And the last section, which is the fiscal services, this section includes the budget allocations for. What council has budgeted to move to reserve for this year, those entries haven't been recorded yet. And also the transfers, the cost for the. Remaining reserve activities, remaining reserve projects that we've budgeted for this year. They'll be allocated to this section as well, and 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 they haven't really started at the point of these statements. So that's that's really my my summary on 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 our financial position as of the end of April.
Thanks, Tim, can you give me back the screen, please?
You bet.
Okay, council, do you have any questions for Tim? Madam Mayor.
Yes, thank you, um, how's the twenty twenty budget coming along now that we know the province will accept the? Draft amphibex statement, when can we expect that?
Um, so I'm just gonna clarify your question, you're referring to the twenty twenty audit, is that correct?
Uh, yes, well, we don't have, yeah, the audited financial statements.
So we did receive the draft statements from alphabets, and they have been sent on to the auditor, and they are working on. On our drafts now, so I don't know the exact timeline, but they are working on it, and and we are keeping in touch with them on that as well.
Okay, and then the twenty twenty-one.
Twenty-one, twenty twenty-one audit process is starting now, so that takes a few steps. And and one of the first steps is is me preparing some information to send to to the auditors so that they have something to review, so. I'm working on that now.
Okay, thank you. Well, do you have an approximate date?
On when the information is going to be sent to the auditors?
Yeah, on the twenty twenty-one.
On the twenty twenty-one, I don't have an exact date at this time, it depends on. The availability of the information I'm looking for, and I'll know that over the next few weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Hobie.
Yeah, thanks, uh, thank you, uh, Tim, just a little, you have a surplus slash deficit line. So you have your budget, what we've used so far, our budget remaining, and then the next line underneath kind of doesn't make sense to me, so maybe you can guide me through it.
Yeah, so so the surplus deficit, it shows that we've spent more than we brought in in revenue. Which is correct, because we don't have the tax revenue recorded at this time, so it's it's still a math. Math equation, and it just shows that we're waiting for the those revenues to come in.
Okay, perfect, thank you very much.
Okay, any further questions, comments for Tim? Hearing and seeing none, Tim, thank you very much for your presentation. Okay, move on to item five, old business, there isn't any, item six, there is new business, there is none.
Excuse me, Mr. John, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Sorry, well, I was on medical leave, um, I noted I now have the opportunity to watch the cow meeting. I know the cow meetings are canceled for July and August. DJ has recommended some lunch hour meetings, I trust. These meetings will be advert or put on the website and will be videotaped so that residents are aware.
No, because some of those meetings are for preliminary discussions and legal and personnel. So whatever can be, whatever can be recorded will be, but most of it will be preliminary discussions.
Well, that still has to be noted on our website, even if it's all in camera, we still have to have an agenda. All meetings of council are are open to the public, but we've had them in the past where they're in camera, but they still have to be advertised.
We'll let DJ fill fill us in on on the legality of that, Deputy Mayor Hobie.
Well, I can wait till DJ responds, but I have some comments then.
Yeah, I guess we'll see when we have certain meetings, like the chair said, will be public and certain ones will be preliminary in nature. Just really depends, so if we're getting the report from the auditors, that could certainly be public, Madam Mayor, and that would be great, and. I'm sure many people enjoy listening to the audit report, that's always exciting, I'm hoping we get one for solid race master plan, that would be public as well. I expect we'll get one for Scatlet Mill and Murray, that would also for the recreation master plan, that one would certainly be public as well. You know, I'll see what the other ones are at, some of them might be preliminary in nature, I don't know. Certainly, I'm very, very open about having an open government and having as much stuff in public as possible, and only the stuff that absolutely has to go in camera, I recommend that it go on camera.
Deputy Mayor Hobie.
So that I would, basically, it would, if it constitutes the definition of a cow meeting. Then we would have a scheduled cow meeting, and then anything, just like we do now, anything that goes in camera, we go in camera, but at least we're being open and transparent, and. Residents are aware that if we do have meetings, that at this point, there's, we're saying we won't need a committee of the whole meeting, but should we need a committee of the whole meeting? In those two months, as long as we advertise that there is some sort of level of meeting, and and I have no problem going in camera for items that are in camera, but I think we need to be open and transparent. Let them know when the meeting is going to take place, record it, have it available to for them, and of course, put anything that needs to go in camera into in camera as we do now.
Absolutely, yeah, we can be very proud about how how public we are and how transparent, and how we still keep all the videos on at the meeting, and so if they're public, the videos will be for people to watch at any time as well. And we can post them on our webpage when they are going to be public meetings, it's again, something that we certainly can be proud of as a council.
Thank you.
Okay, then let's move on.
I agree with DJ said, you know, we seen this evening about we started off a meeting which should have been purely in camera, and we backtracked on it, and. And there was even a comment made about doctoring off the recording, so we'll see where that goes, but anyway. You know, some of the discussion that we want to talk about is stuff that was come back from. FCM from the trade show, some information to bring to council, so this is all positive stuff, and like like DJ says, we can be proud of the how transparent we are, so. Let's be positive, once again, like I said.
Okay, thanks, Council, let's let's move on, there's no old business, new business, I guess that brings us to in camera. And so I'll read the resolution, and then we will, we will move in camera, and I believe Matt, before I do that. DJ, was there other items that were in camera, or was it just, was it just what what the mayor wants to speak about?
Yeah, I had no in-camera items.
Okay, so that means, that being said, we'll we'll call, we'll call you back as soon as we're done in in camera then?
Yeah, certainly, Tim, Tim will be at the ready somewhere, so.
Okay, well.
I might be driving home myself, but we'll we'll figure it out.
Okay, well, we'll call you when when we're finished in camera. Motion that camera moving council at six forty-eight PM to discuss matters that are in preliminary stages and respecting which discussion and public could purchase. Municipality's ability to carry out its activities or negotiation as well as legal and personnel issues. And be it further resolved that council, that members of council agree to keep in confidence a matter that is discussed. At a meeting that is close to the public under subsection one-five-two-dash-three, and that the committee decides to keep confidential. Until the matters discussed at a meeting that of the council or of a committee conducted in public, can I have a mover, please? Moved by councillor Pritchett, second by councillor Garvey, you are now on camera, Tim. Motion to move out of camera at seven twenty-seven PM, can I have a mover, please, councillor Pritchett moves, councillor Poll seconds, all in favor? That is carried, thank you very much, there is nothing to report from from the in-camera discussions tonight. So it brings us to the end of the meeting, motion to adjourn the meeting at seven twenty-eight PM, can I have a mover, councillor Poll moves, councillor Garvey seconds, all in favor? That is carried, thank you very, thank you everybody, have a great rest of your evening.